We start to join us. I have our kind of.
Slavienice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The agenda is picked and amended will be followed. So all necessary and needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the mayor. Second, state your name and address to the record. And third, you'll have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. There are copies available of the agenda in the back. There is a sign up sheet, and please turn your cell phones on. Thank you.
Take motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda for tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would like to amend the agenda, removing item 6E under council items.
6E?
Yes.
Are there any other amendments?
That's being moved to under council items or being removed?
Under council items, E is removed. Any other amendments? Take motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our first item tonight, we have a representative from Centerpoint Energy here tonight to present the community partnership grant to the city. Our fire department had requested a grant to get radios so that all of our firefighters would have a radio. It's a safety device going in. And the city had put in some money earlier this year, and the Lions contributed some money, and Centerpoint Energy has contributed money. So now all of our firefighters will be equipped with radios. So we will take the opportunity to hear from charity tonight and representing Centerpoint Energy, and then we will accept the grant to the fire department and the city. If you go up to the podium, please. And it should be a green light on there. Is it still red?
Still red.
Touch lightly the bottom, on the speaker shelf, the bottom light.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charity Downing from Centerpoint Energy. The Community Partnership Grant Program offers an opportunity for Centerpoint Energy to partner with the cities we serve. We have partnered with communities supporting our shared commitment to safety while delivering safe, reliable natural gas for over 145 years. Since 2003, the program has exceeded 1.5 million in donations and helped support the funding of 775 projects in the communities throughout the company's service area. Through the grant program, we are able to help cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to our community. I am pleased to present the city of Nowland with a community partnership grant of $2,051 that will be used to purchase an 800 megahertz portable radio. Thank you.
And we thank you very much. And so we accept gratefully the grant. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Chad Sacre with Campford, Nolont Station. Nolont Station here is our accepted grant. We greatly appreciate it. This is going to act as a lifeline between our firefighters and our commanders on scene, be part of our turn off gear so that firefighters can have a radio and be able to access the commander anytime. Thank you very much.
Next drawn our agenda is the sheriff's report.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Sergeant Josh Adams, Anoka County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Wayne Heath, Sonny will make it today. Just go through the monthly report. July, there's 161 calls for service in the city of Nowland. Some of the highlights, they're not highlights, but higher calls where there were five thefts reported, 25 traffic arrests, two damage to properties, and two misdemeanor arrests. Total overall calls throughout the entire month of July was 201. Year to date, we're at 1,022. This time last year to date, we're at 1,018. So pretty much on the same track as last year so far for calls for service. Official calls, a couple items, well, one item to note really is Bar Nun seems to have been getting a more spike in calls recently over the past few months. Last month, for the month of July, there was one. The previous months, there was five or more calls to Bar Nun. Don't really know why or what's going on out there, but we have obviously been responding out there a little bit more than in the past. Other than that, it's, we look like we're pretty much on par, you know, as last year for calls for service. This year, as we were at this point in time last year.
How would you say that from what you're aware of from Patrol Division, the calls in Nowland reflect what you're seeing in other communities in Anoka County?
In my personal experiences, it's average. It's, I don't think it's really any different than any other community. I think there's fewer calls or less calls in Nowland just due to population as compared to, say, Andover, Ham Lake. But the calls are pretty much same type of calls, just at less frequency than in cities with higher populations is from what I personally see.
Counsel, have any questions or comments for the record?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I have one question for the sergeant. There's been a change in the director at Bar Nun.
Okay.
Has Anoka County Sheriff's Office reached out to the new director there at all?
I don't know that we're even aware that there is a new director until right now. So that would be obviously something that we would need to do, obviously. Obviously, I think we'd prove both of our agencies to communicate with each other.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Thank you, Sergeant. All right. And the floor items. Our first up is Kent Raisler.
Mayor and council, my item is next on the agenda, and I just wanted to address a couple of phone calls that I received this week with questions on our proposal. The questions were, what's feeling our proposal and why are we proposing it, and what's changed in that corridor in order to enhance it to, for commercial? There's actually three reasons. 181st is a arterial street, basically, with about 7,000 cars a day, and that number of cars is going to increase significantly into the future into a short order, especially at that intersection. And there's three reasons. Number one is that the school going into Ramsey, 181st, you extend to Nowland Boulevard, and then you just head a little bit south. There'll be over 1,000 children in that school. That's going to change the traffic pattern and so forth, and it's also going to change where the people shop and everything else. Instead of going into Anoka, they're now going to start coming towards Elk River with their children and so forth. So that'll put a lot of cars, it's estimated somewhere around 1,000 cars per day on 181st. Number two is the housing development in Elk River, just to the west of this area. There's 300 homes being built just south of Twin Lakes Elementary School. The majority of those people will travel south down Cleveland Avenue to 181st, and instead of going into Elk River to catch the freeway, they will travel over to Armstrong and then to the south. So that'll put 500 to 1,000 cars per day onto 181st. And number three is the Armstrong interchange in Ramsey. Now it's a full-blown interchange, and a lot of cars are traveling down Bod that connects to Armstrong and getting onto the freeway there. So it's going to add a lot of cars, and it's going to add a lot of impact. That area is fast-growing, and we, as a municipality, have a opportunity to capitalize on the commercial businesses along that corridor. Because the businesses will come, whether they're on this corner or somewhere else along Bod or south, or, excuse me, 181st or south along Armstrong. It's just a matter of time. As soon as it warrants it, they'll be coming, and so I would like to see us capitalize on that rather than having it right across the street. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Matyszewski.
I agree with Mr. Radamacher. That is what's going to happen, but right now, I think it doesn't need it. First of all, the roads are in real bad shape. They're a very dangerous road. We rode our bikes on there just a couple days ago, and we had to actually stop a couple times within a half mile till we could get to a shoulder on Armstrong Boulevard. So it's a very dangerous road. It's falling apart. I think the increase in traffic, which a service station would bring, is going to make it a lot worse. I think 1,000 peoples, 1,000 cars per day doesn't include all the semis that are sneaking past the weigh station, and I think that is going to increase also, especially if the road is improved upon, which it would have to be. That's a real concern for me, and I don't think that station should come in there for that reason. Right now, I have to actually pull out in front of cars to get out on the road. I had to wait five minutes just to get out of my driveway, which is kind of ridiculous that the road has gotten that busy. 1,000 is really right at the bottom of how many cars are going to be going there per day. I think it's actually going to be a lot more than that. And so I really would like that road to be improved or something to be improved on both Bog Street and 181st to make it a better and safer situation for all of us. If this is going to go through, it's got to be the concern of all the residents in the area, that how many people are going to have to get hurt or killed along that road because there's a gas station there, which is going to increase the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clayton Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clayton Conley, 9030 184th Avenue Northwest. Is the planner going to be here tonight?
No.
Okay. Well, most of my questions do go to her for the topic, so that's kind of.
She attends our workshops. She doesn't typically attend the council meetings.
Okay. Well, I haven't gotten an email back or a message back to, to answer questions that I had for her. I tried to save the city residents money by not going through the planner. I didn't get questions answered, so. You may have any packets? The petition with the neighborhood? I don't know whether that needed to be on a floor item. Maybe Corey can answer that or if it's good.
It hasn't been included in our packet.
Okay. And then with the absence of the planner, a couple of things Mr. Raisler brought up that, as I was listening, I was kind of curious that it's his development that he's doing in Elk River, and he's moving south from Twin Lakes Elementary, and that's going to cause more residents and what have you. So it's interesting that he's at the workshop and he's saying how a quick trip and Bill Suparet has already approached him for 181st in Cleveland. Well, do it. Go. Nobody's objecting from Nowland for that. If they're offering, do it. And as I took a drive down 22 to where his current residence is, the property's still for sale at 47 and 22, just north of him. I get the business decision of what the price tag is on that currently commercially zoned property that's available, but if that's the price to do on business, that's the price to do on business in Nowland. And yes, you can try to do a $1,200, $1,500 app, rezone, and then you don't have to pay the high fee for the land. I get that, and I respect that. But as you quoted, Mr. Mayor, in the May 30th, in the minutes, you quoted, "Commercial buildings are to be continuous with commercial buildings. We don't allow separate parcels of land," which currently, if the planner was here, she could confirm with you all and state that that's where we're currently at. We're at a 10-acre commercial lot, spot zoning, the very definition of that when it's permanent rural residential. So I don't even know why this is on the agenda, to be honest with you. Yes, you can bring in amendment, but this thing's been amended three times. It's hard to follow. And then you have several people from the community making several different reasons opposing and where the planner is just with one brush of a stroke trying to say she answered everybody's concerns and questions, and that's not the case, as with, well, specifically to my thing with police calls. And again, the sheriff isn't here. The sheriff isn't here to answer, and where she was giving the answer that Mr. Radamacher was talking about calls for service, Bill Suparet, right here currently, we love it. It serves our community. But you can't take those calls for service when he says 31 calls and then does the math. That's not butted up to residential. That's not what I'm getting at when I posed the question to the planner and to police departments and to what is going to happen to Nowland to affect this community that I think is needed to be dragged home to the council to appreciate and understand. We have a contract card, it's my understanding. I see.
I'm going to have to cut you short here because you've gone past your three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cutting me short.
Actually, I'm not cutting you short. You've gone past the three minutes, which is the allotted time on open floor items, so.
Okay. I'll end with, with the League of Minnesota City Statute, you need a two-thirds vote to go from residential to commercial, which this is, and that's it.
Thank you. Actually, that's the state statute.
Well, it's through the League of Minnesota Cities as well, but in case you didn't know because the planner didn't get back to me.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Item I, or A, excuse me, the Radamacher-Raisler Comp Plan Amendment slash Rezoning. I move that the council deny the request.
I have a motion.
I'll second the discussion.
Motion is second. I'll take the floor to discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I am not in favor of this for many reasons. One of the bigger reasons is we are just going to start working on our 2040 Comp Plan, and any changes, whether there are any changes in the upcoming Comp Plan, whether they be big or small, I believe should all be made at that time, and that this is not the appropriate time to entertain a request such as this. We are obligated to have the conversation, have the public hearings, have a conversation. We have to do that, but I don't believe it's the correct time to request a change to our Comp Plan.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I'm not saying I'm either for or against this at this, but again, I do agree as well that, you know, we are in the process of working on our Comp Plan. We lost 80 acres out of our commercial district already. So as a city, we do need to look at, you know, how, do we want to replace that? How do we replace it? Replace it? Where do we replace it? And, you know, I guess to me, again, I'm not saying I'm for or against, but there's a lot of unanswered questions, in my opinion, on this. Something's going to happen sooner or later on that property, what it is. We need to decide that as a city. And again, I think the best time to look at that is look at it as a whole when we work and finish that new Comp Plan.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I mean, we can wait and do that. I think everybody here, when they first came, agreed that this would be a good location for a convenience store, gas station, liquor store, and maybe a few other small business businesses. I don't agree the full 80 should be commercial there. I think our, your commercial industrial, you want to keep it centralized, and the major part of it is centralizing your community. So if you put too much over there, the city of Elk River could possibly, we have sewer and water to get annexed and lure businesses to go over Elk River. But I think this is a good intersection for a gas station, convenience store, liquor store, and someday, something's going to go there. I just hope we're, if we don't wait too long, where it's, the property's going to be developed and got, you know, it'd be a missed opportunity.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I agree that, you know, part of taking the land out, I also understand, and anyone on the council can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, we added, we added that 80 acres that we took out, we added that in for a development that never came to be way back when. So now might not be the right time to take a look at this amendment, but I would say, you know, I've heard comments in the past from the planner that we have some people who are interested in developing and not in our current business district, so it may be worth looking at what some other options may or may be, but I think that needs to be done as part of the Comp Plan update for 2040.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
And with that, I, you know, again, in working on that Comp Plan, I think we need to involve, you know, development. We need to involve residents. We need to get an entire picture, because I agree with Councilman Bettinger that by not pa, I'm not saying it's not a bad location. It probably is a good location, but again, it's, it's, you know, and we're probably going to take a gamble by not passing it tonight, but again, we need to look at the whole broad picture. And I'm not saying, you know, because we lost 80 acres, we need to take 80 acres over there. It's, again, we need to look at the whole picture and figure out, you know, what would work best, you know, because obviously, business brings in tax revenue. We need some, to spur some growth, because as of right now, we don't meet the threshold for our road improvements. We've got to reach 5,000 residents to be able to get additional state funding for our roads, and obviously, we're short of that. And until we start getting some growth in the city, we're not going to hit those marks, and we're not going to get the revenue in. And unfortunately, to everybody, you know, in order to do some of the improvements that we've got to do with roads and other things, our tax revenues are going to have to go up. So we got to figure some way, if we want to keep our taxes down, to subsidize that other money somehow, some way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
You know, commercial is appropriate in areas. I think it's smarter that we stay within our existing commercial areas and look to expand those if the council even decides to do an expansion. I don't think you should make a decision on something because we may lose out down the road, and we have to look at what is right now, what is the correct thing to do, and that is, in my opinion, to deny this. You know, commercial, there's, you hear with commercial properties, it brings in more taxes and things like that. That isn't, it does bring in additional taxes, but it costs us as a city to maintain the extra roads that are going to be needed there. With additional commercial, there is the opportunity for the sheriff's office to increase our contract, to watch commercial properties. So it isn't the big windfall that people believe it can be. There's a building that, if I'm not mistaken, it's like, I mean, and I'm not going to say it because I don't remember the numbers, but the percentage of a, if you look at your overall property tax, and same with residents, if you look at what your overall property tax is, the city of Nowland is getting the smallest piece, other than probably Met Council, the smallest piece of that property tax, and that's the same for commercial. So we have to be very careful if we expand anything, if we choose to expand anything, because it isn't an automatic windfall for us. It could cost us in the long run, cost us money, cost us residents that don't want to be butting up to commercial. The commercial areas we have right now, the people that live next to those already know that's commercial. There will be, I'm sure, some fight if we expand that. But this is looking at putting commercial into an area that there isn't any at the time, and I don't believe that there should be commercial there. The other thing, too, is we talked about, one gentleman spoke to the roads. Well, Bow, 181st and Armstrong are all county roads. We have no control over those roads. So then you need to make sure that the county is willing to step up and make the improvements to those roads, and that'll be the same consideration anywhere else that we do any type of increase in commercial area.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Mr. Mayor, can the motion be read, please?
Reindel, need a motion to deny the request.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, I believe that was drawn.
Mr. Mayor, I think item A has, because this last request was for 10 acres, so we have to accept a withdrawal for the rest of the property on the next two A and D, and I'll make a motion to do so.
All right.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion to accept the withdrawal of the request for the additional land in the southwest corner owned by Mr. Raisler and the adjoining land owned by the Stovers, Daniel and Jamie Stover. There's been a request to remove those from the proposed Comp Plan Amendment, and the motion is to accept that withdrawal. A motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make the motion to approve the encroachment agreement between the Welling and the city of Nowland.
I'll second.
Do second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I was curious if Councilmember Bettinger would be amiable to amending his amendment to include on condition of the county, the lots getting combined. Is that based on the email from today?
Sure.
Other comments? I think the Wellings have said that they would be willing to combine the lots into one pin, and I think the planner's recommendation was to hold the final approval until that was actually accomplished. So would that be part of your motion as well, Councilman Bettinger?
That's correct.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the encroachment agreement with the condition of the, upon the combining of the various parcels into one pin. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jay Agelberg, request for special approved installed proposed fence.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve his request for temporary storage until his IU P is approved. If not approved, then he would have to remove the outside storage.
All right. Second. Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just clarifying, Councilmember Bettinger, you're talking about the outdoor storage and not the fence because it truly doesn't need the fence approval?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would move items 1, 1.1 through 1.9 on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. The motion is second. Any challenge to that? Any challenge to that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
Um, under council items A, um, request for council action to approve a contract for recycling center addition. I would move that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rayville, I didn't hear that.
That, that we, we approve, um, directly negotiating with structural buildings to complete the addition to the recycling center work based on the amount stated in their bid documents. And they have staff work with the city attorney to compile the necessary legal, legal contracts, documents, bonds, et cetera, for the contracted services. And just to clarify, staff is, um, our city clerk.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
Her con, uh, discussion at the workshop, I did reach out to Sue Dahl. Um, I got an out of office that she's out till next Wednesday. I, I thought it was this Wednesday, so I wouldn't have gotten an answer from her. Um, but I did ask her to clarify whether or not those funds could be used for something other than the addition, as long as the long-term goal was to improve the rec, recycling center and, uh, allow us to accept additional equipment or materials.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So this is just doing the recycle center addition, not the additional fence, correct?
Correct. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
For our discussion at the workshop, I'd like to make a motion to request the council's permission for myself and Mayor Pilon to continue to research other options for the newsletter and other formal city communications.
I would second that.
A motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
At this time, I think we just need to take a look, reevaluate what was going, what's going on and how the, with the current, number of residents who are in the process of improving internet access and have other mechanisms that, right now, might not be the best option for that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
So from my understanding, so this is just for gathering that information, which would come back to the council for further action.
That we'll, we'll come up with some, come up with some other ideas that would, um, you know, after, for, for discussion, yes.
But come before the council.
Come before the council, yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I would just ask that, that, that part of that discussion is looking at an outside vendor, um, to, uh, produce our newsletter. Um, and, uh, hopefully we could, and, um, it could be an income-based up, item for us versus, uh, just an expenditure.
That's on my list, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to proceed forward with the, uh, push ball court with the eighteen feet of new pipe, the pipes to be painted, and Joe's to check out prices for the fence.
I'll second.
A motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I'm wondering if Councilmember Bettinger would also include in his motion, um, a reevaluation of the footings, um, that the pipes are currently in. Um, per the, the pictures I had provided earlier, um, the, the concrete is around many of them. The concrete's already cracking, and that was probably only about two weeks old after that concrete was in. Um, they aren't surface cracks. They, some of them go down just pretty much to the ground. Um, I would like to see footings, if we're going to install a fence, that footings are frost footing, they're in a sonnet tube, it's flat topped. Um, our maintenance supervisor said they were rounded for, to, to handle with weeds. A flat top is the same, you just drive your lawnmower right over it.
I think it's also a sort of water runoff. So they didn't pool around the pipe.
Okay, you, and you can mound it, you can mound that. I just think that in their current state, um, they are, um, not something as a resident I would accept in my parks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
In fencing, you don't need frost footing, so I don't know. And we didn't get that in our original bid, so I don't know why we would ask for that now. And then secondly, based on our discussion at the workshop, it was my understanding that if, since the decision was made to narrow it a little bit, to eliminate some of that sag and go with the single post, that staff was going to take a look at whatever side was the best and move the worst side in. So then, obviously, whichever ones were cracked the most would be eliminated.
I think it was cracked or not.
Correct. Well, he, he was going to look at symmetry and, and dimensions and measurements, and then move whichever side in he deemed best.
But I guess we just to make sure that's included in the.
I, I would amend my motion to have all the footings verified that they're structurally sound and enough not replace them.
And then, so we're clearing the motion, as Councilmember Rickert said, to pick the best side and, and utilize that from a symmetry standpoint. Would include that as well?
That's correct.
Your second would include that as well, obviously. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. So are the new footings going to be the exact same as the existing? Or are they going to be a better version? And maybe not necessarily frost footings, but.
If they're structurally sound, they wouldn't be four of them to replace them, so.
Well, they're going to have to replace at least the ones where we're moving it.
Four of them, yes.
So the, the requirements will be for the ones that are replaced to be structurally sound.
So looking like that, but structurally sound.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Uh, one of, I'd like to make a motion to continue this, um, request for council action to next month. I had a conversation with Joe today, and he hasn't, didn't have a chance to get the, uh, information on the existing loader. I just want to make a motion to continue this to next month.
Second that.
All right, motion to second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
For, for the record, the, the loader that we were sent pictures of this week is already gone, so. Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem. When you find something that's going to be Yak now and move forward or, and, and that, depending on where you find that loader, whether it's private party or, uh, a dealer, it's all, it's all, it's going to change the trade-in. You know, a private guy is not going to take our loader to trade in, so. But I, I'd like to move forward with it, and then we could set a committee of Joe and Dan and Corey to, to, you know, set a dollar amount on it and, and move forward with one of that, whatever it is. I mean, if we buy one, if we get, we can get a fifteen thousand for a trade-in, great. If we can't, we'll have to sell it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I agree with Councilman Bettinger. You know, it's just similar to what we did on the, on a rescue truck. It's, if we're looking for a used, used equipment on auction, they go fast. And if we're not able to be, you know, willing and able to react when Joe finds something that he likes, we're going to lose it. And a perfect example is the one we have just put in our package tonight, it's already gone. So again, I would like to, you know, we've, we've already budgeted for it. We have funds in the budget. I would like to, you know, again, come up at some point, you know, with a, a dollar amount not to exceed and set that cap. And again, I don't have any problem with Dan and Joe and Corey being a committee to get that done, you know, as soon as, as long as we put a cap on the dollar amount. Again, we've budgeted for it, certainly it's needed.
Corey, did you find out about the funds? Is there, uh, first half funds yet to go into that?
Yeah, it's just an easy, two-minute transfer.
That's twenty-five?
Yeah.
One of the things right now is the, the funds haven't been transferred yet, so we wouldn't have been able to act today anyway, so. Easy transaction, but other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
If, if there are outstanding questions that, um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with changing, with withdrawing my motion, if there are questions that the council has, would like addressed, I would like to, if we want to change, I would like to know those. So we have everything that everybody's happy with going into the transaction.
I, I think your original motion with the, the idea that you don't have the answers yet is, and, and we don't have the questions off the tip of our tongues, but we don't know what the, the value of our current piece of equipment is, the current loader. We know, hey, dealer would, would potentially give fifteen thousand on trade-in. I don't know if any of these that we're looking at would be dealers. I don't know what its market value is outside of a trade-in. I mean, that's part of it. The other, the other part is, you know, in the request for council action, we've had a discussion on, um, other things it could do. I'm assuming right now, since the only thing we're looking at, unless it comes as a package, would be a bucket. And so the, the tree removal and the snow removal and those things, I saw some attachments that would be coming or would likely be coming sometime down the road with the grappler and the wing and the blade and things like that. I don't know how much of that, right now, we would use compared to what we're using our current loader. I, I don't know if that was clear to the rest of the council. I, I didn't quite understand how much capability we have with just with the bucket.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I, I, I would like to continue with, um, Councilmember Bryan's, um, motion to continue it till September, till, um, some of the, some of the questions are answered, asked and answered. Um, Joe's comfortable with what it, what it is we're looking at. And so that we make a, make the right decision when we can buy something. And, and I agree, there are auctions, so things do go fast, but, um, we're not obligated to, to move fast. We've been going, um, we've been operating without this for quite a while. Um, and I don't see the need to, to jump on it, um, without having all the questions answered.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Then in, in my opinion, and if we're going to wait till September, we need to have those questions defined so that they can be asked and answered.
I absolutely think that, that questions should be presented to, to Joe, to the Roden Bridge that's been discussing it, and get that all clarified. I agree.
Otherwise, we'll be another month down and we won't have anything.
I agree. And there's nothing stopping us from, you know, getting those questions directly to Joe or to Corey and to the council through Corey, as long as we keep it all public. But yes, I, I would agree, if the questions aren't, aren't asked, can't expect an answer, and if they're not asked by the next family meet, then they're probably not important questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think a lot of the questions have been asked at the Roden Bridge Committee level and been answered, and they've been dealt with there. I guess if we'd have been keeping up with that over the last year. The loader we have now basically can't do a real lot. It's not four-wheel drive, or it never was. It, it's not that four-wheel drive don't work, they don't have it. That thing gets stuck in a couple inches of snow here. They basically use it to load the sand salt onto the truck. If you had a new loader with a quick attach front end on it, where you can, you can buy other, uh, buckets or forks or grapples or all kinds of things that you can use for it, but just even a bucket, you could use it for plowing snow, loading the trucks. You could use it for scrubbing trees, going out in winter time, clearing intersections, brushing. It's, it's, it becomes a real tool because the one piece, he knows, he knows what we need. He knows what he wants for, for our community. And he's already got that figured out. And, and I think we need to trust him on that. And it's been discussed at Roden Bridge for, like I said, for the last year. The one we have now is basically, it's a chunk of metal. And you're right, trading it in, you may get a little more than a private party. We don't know exactly. And until we make the decision whether, where we're buying our next one from, whether it's a dealer to trade it in or a private party, we don't know what we're going to get for that machine.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
Again, we've been operating with a bucket, uh, or with a, a loader that doesn't do much for us for quite a while. Snow's not coming in the next month, um, or two, or three, maybe four. Um, I, I, I would like to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row. Um, we also should have an idea for future planning what these other, um, options will cost us because we need to budget for that. So forks, grappler, the blower, broom, whatever else Joe would like. We should have an idea of what those items will cost so that we can budget that. We don't have that at this point. And, and again, I don't see the, the rush. There's, you know, in a week, there's two of them on the market. One, at least one, or three are on the market, one is gone. Um, so I, I, I don't see the need to, to jump on this. Um, I, I think there's still some additional information that needs to be gathered.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I do differ, in my opinion, with that said, due to the fact that the skid loader that we have does do way more than it should be doing now. So we are using a piece of equipment probably more than, and we're then taking, you know, life out of that piece of equipment because we're putting a Band-Aid over, you know, a fix because of the equipment that we have now that's not adequate. So there is more of a demand than you think there is. And for you to say there's, we're four months out on snow, you have no idea for four months, two months. Unfortunately, in a state, you never know when it's going to snow, or may not snow. But again, there's other uses, you know, in preparation for snow season, you know, and getting, you know, dirt and sand and whatnot moved around. So again, there is more of a need than, than I think you're letting on just due to the fact that there is other equipment that we are over utilizing now to take up that slack.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
To Councilmember Rickert's point, you're correct, but we've been over utilizing it for how many years? Another couple of months isn't going to hurt it. And I could be wrong, and it could snow tomorrow, but, uh, I, I just think we need to have some initial information, that, you know, the issue of the, the different items that we would look to purchase later. Call the question.
Mr. Mayor, I was going.
Call the question, you're, you're in a second on that? I have a second, I'm calling questions, so we will continue discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
I think having, as a, Joe, Joe was okay postponing this another month. That gives us some time to get the extra questions answered. Um, and then, I think we'll have a, have a, the plan would be to, uh, be able to move forward with this in September.
All right. With that said, and the discussions we've had, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item B has been withdrawn, item F.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would like to make a motion to approve the establishment of the. the road evaluation as documented by our planner, our city engineer.
Second thought?
Motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Again, I'm, I'm opposed to the report of this one. We've, we've studied and studied and studied. We got this one done in 2012, we paid five grand for. And here, they recommended, we're, we're behind back then. We're deficient for catch-up. We needed three-point-three million. Nothing was done. We've updated this in 2015. Nothing's been done. Nothing's really been added to the budget to, to correct or make changes to catch up. What's another plan gonna do? It's gonna tell us the same thing. We're gonna spend another thirty-two hundred bucks, and it's, and we're not gonna raise taxes enough to fund it, so we have another plan sitting on the shelf, and nothing to be done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Having a five-year plan, and it will establish the capital improvement projects that are recommended within the five-year timeframe, that we can use as we're putting together our budget, so we have an idea going forward, how much should be put away. And that's not discounting that there are current needs, and those can, could theoretically still go forward once this is done, knowing we have, there's no, there's no, as I understand it, there's no way we're going to be able to do, do any major work between now and the end of the year, so then we'll have that ready going forward next year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Again, this plan recommended back then, two-hundred-and-forty-grand a year. We're not even halfway there. We couldn't fund this. And now we're gonna play catch-up by doing a five-year plan, and we're gonna fund it? I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna happen. We've tried to get that, that budget higher for our Road Improvement Fund to get closer, and we, we haven't, we haven't had full support of the council to do that in the past. I've tried to get, last two years, the leftover money left over in the fund transferred, I've tried to get some money transferred to the Road Improvement Fund, it's been denied. I, I haven't even been able to get support to do that, but all of a sudden, we're gonna get, get a brand-new five-year plan done, and we're gonna support it, and we're gonna add another hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars into our budget, or more, to fund that? I don't think so. I don't think another plan's gonna help us.
I think the discussion we had the other night was, was very fruitful. I think getting the professionals together, the attorney, the, the engineer, the, the financial consultant, I think it's the most excited I've seen our Road and Bridge Committee in quite some time, that they, they actually had some positive reinforcement and, and opportunity to move forward, for whatever dysfunction there's been in the past. And, and, you know, that can be spread around. People have been, been part of this for a long time, but I think having bite-sized pieces that we can, we can manage and we can explain, to, to go and say to the residents, here's a three-million-dollar bill, or here's a half-a-million-dollar increase every year, isn't reasonable. And I don't know that it was a plan, it was a study, and there were certainly some recommendations, but the, the committee, which, which you were a part of for years, didn't even have that study. And that, that was pulling hen's teeth to, to get that to the committee, to even use that information. So I think it's a good opportunity for a fresh start. We've been circling around this mountain for a long time, and pointing fingers and, and recounting the past. Let's start fresh, let's go forward with the study, let's go forward with the plan, let's go forward that we can put something into budget that the residents can appreciate, there's some work behind it, and there's a plan going forward that they can see the fruit of.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I agree with Councilman Bettinger, the fact that we have paid the city engineer for a road study, which in a sense is a plan. He just said this is a study and a plan. Why is that then not considered a study and a plan? He specifically, in that study, which again, was updated two years ago, specifically told us what we should be budgeting to keep our current roads, you know, in, in decent shape. And as Councilman Bettinger stated, you know, we're way off that mark on what we budget for, and we have been for years. And unfortunately, I think going forward, we're gonna be for years, 'cause if, if we increase it to what he recommends, everybody out here's gonna be livid, because their taxes are gonna skyrocket. But for us to throw away, you're basically in a sense saying, take that road study that we've already paid for, twice, and saying, throw it away, we don't need this anymore, we're gonna pay another thirty-two hundred dollars to do a new one, is, to me, just like throwing money away. We have a study, we have a plan, the city engineer has already recommended what he thought we should be doing, and we haven't been doing it. So now we wanna throw thirty-hundred, thirty-two hundred dollars to a problem to get another report that we claim and say we're gonna do something with. Well, what guarantee do I have that you're actually gonna do something with it, when we didn't do anything with the one we had done in 2012 and 2015?
I think it's, I think it's an investment, I don't think it's throwing money away. And I think that, that this is actually a capital improvement plan. The studies that, that were done weren't utilized by the city effectively. Like I said, the Road and Bridge didn't even have the information to, to use it to that effect. We were very reactionary. And I think it's, it's an opportunity to actually have a plan, not just a study, but a plan saying, here's how you would invest your money, and to coincide with feasibility studies, which have never been done. We've been very reactionary, we know which roads are bad, and, and within our, our Public Works Department, we've been reactionary, within our Road and Bridge Committee, and within our council. We've been reacting to breakdowns, and not going in with a, a, an actual plan. And we, we pay good money for people to, to provide that, so we're not just reacting. What should we be doing? We have Road and Bridge meetings pretty much every month, and they, they've not been able to be effective. And I think personally, that this is, this is a way to help us get off the dime and move forward together.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
That is not true, that. They did not receive, they may not have received the 2012 plan, 'cause I wasn't here then. The 2015 update, the Road and Bridge Committee did receive it. They may have lost it or misplaced it, but when that was updated, they received copies for the minutes, or for that meeting, and so they did have it, and still.
I, I remember having vigorous discussion as to whether they need it, and as liaison at the time, you didn't think they did. So, but again, I would like to say, we can rehash the past as long as we want, the roads are what they are. They, you know, we, we didn't inherit a, a plan from the township days, and we didn't have an effective plan going in there. We, we did a study, it hasn't been fully implemented, and we have an opportunity to start fresh. And so at this point, the question before the, the council is, do we wanna invest the thirty-two hundred dollars, work with the engineer, to get this ball rolling? And that's the motion, if I understand.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Again, I was opposed to making copies of the 2012 report, the full report for the Road and Bridge Committee, not giving copies of the 2015 plan. So that's not true, what you said. Another thing that isn't true is, when we became a city in 2008, Shane, to the process of becoming a city, did do a study on our roads with a capital improvement plan. That was part of the process of becoming a city. So that was done for the city at the time you guys took over, and what happened to that, or what you guys did with it, evidently, I don't know. But nothing was done. But there was a plan, starting off in 2008.
And then what was the plan prior to 2008? These roads have existed a lot longer than that.
Mr. Mayor.
And again, we can sit here and debate the past all we want. The question here is, how do we wanna go forward?
And again, Mr. Mayor, you just threw another accusation out here. What did we do in the past from our township? We improved many roads, and assessed them back, many roads, using the city engineer.
And, and we heard from those that were assessed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert, one more.
The issue that I have, I guess, is, is this, is okay, we decided to spend, spend thirty-two hundred dollars on this new study. To me, it's nothing more than a study. It's gonna give us changed recommendations on what he thinks we should do over the window that we... With this, there's no feasibility study involved in this at all. So say, for an example, we, one of the projects that he wants to go forward with is old Viking that we've been discussing now. So now the city has to then pay for that feasibility study. Okay, now if we do that, and do that feasibility study, and we pay for that feasibility study, and we find out, okay, people don't want it because the assessment's too high, we can't assess people because their property values don't increase, obviously, the city doesn't have, have the money, so with, after all this said and done, now we paid for this feasibility study, and we can't do the project, now the city's out how much for that? So what I'm saying is, I would rather take that thirty-two hundred dollars and actually apply it to a feasibility study of the project that we started talking about in the first place, and see where that gets us. 'Cause right now, there is no guarantee after we have to pay for this, and then pay for a feasibility study on any one of these projects, that we can fund any one of those projects. Now we're out that many more thousands of dollars. That's why I think it's, rather than picking one project now and actually going ahead and, and trying to run the process, and getting something out of our dollar to figure out where we truly are, we're throwing more money at something where, in the long run, we could be, end up throwing just money out the window.
Councilmember Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
We have budgeted money in, in our, in our engineering fund, for items, for the engineer to provide services to us. And so it's money that we budgeted, I think it's a smart idea that we go through it, as the mayor says, let's start fresh. We had the meeting with the, the attorney, the engineer, the, our bond counsel. Let's see what Shane provides us, let's use the expertise of those other parties, and let's move forward with it. What's happened in the past has happened in the past, let's go forward, 'cause we're, we're not getting anywhere, and if we don't go forward, we won't get any, anywhere.
And I like the, the idea that, that what we're asking Shane to provide is not just one sample, which, which may be an outlier. You know, as, as we heard at the workshop, old Viking with the number of, of parcels on that road changes significantly when you go to some of these smaller roads with, with less density. And I think having this cross-section that's presented here, and a five-year plan with preliminary cost, would give us a good understanding of not just what an old Viking would be, but what different roads would be in the cost, so that we can understand what we're presenting to the taxpayers, as a whole project, right, rather than piecemeal. So with that said, we have a motion, we have a second, and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no new items, I would move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd like to, I've seen in the local, or on the city legal paper, that there was an update there about internet service coming to Nowland. I just wonder if you could give us an update on, on where that grant money came from, the CenturyLink, and what, you know...
CenturyLink has, has applied for Connect America Fund, it's federal funds. There is a, I think it's a six-year plan, and they have obligations to bring service to a certain number of homes within their service area, which covers most of the state. They have targeted Nowland as an opportunity, they have to have forty percent, I believe it is, within the first two years of their grant, or in the second year of their grant. And it's an opportunity within Nowland to, because of our lack of service throughout the city, at least the northern part of the city, to see a number of households hooked up. So over this past year, they have been doing the infrastructure work. They have twenty-four projects going on in Nowland currently. Three of them are considered complete, twenty-one of them are still in process. Nowland is served out of Elk River, there's nine projects on the Elk River side, there's fifteen projects coming out of the Oak Grove side, and there's still some clarification, but the southwest corner of the city is from Nowland Boulevard down to Hundred and Eighty-First, or from Viking Boulevard to Hundred and Eighty-First, Nowland to Baw. It appears is served maybe out of Ramsey, they're still trying to clarify that. Now what they are saying is, is the service is expected, all twenty-four projects are expected to be completed by the end of September. So that's what they're officially saying. People that are interested in, in finding out the cost and the speeds that they're available for, are encouraged to call Coon Rapids Retail Store. And they will, they have the most current information. A number of residents have been calling eight-hundred number, and they are not as current as the Coon Rapids Retail Store. Within that, the number of jobs are waiting for electrical hookup, they're installed, but they, they're on Conexus's waiting list to get meters put into them. You may see the boxes around town with the hole for the meter. Those are pretty much complete, but they're waiting for Conexus to, to complete them. It is entirely a CenturyLink project, there's no city obligation, no city contract, no city funds. They are using Connect America Funds on the new installation, they are using their own funds to upgrade homes, so anybody who's got CenturyLink right now, there are opportunities to increase the speeds through bonded pairs and some other technical things that they can do to existing properties at no cost for residents. But there's no obligation, obligation or partnership or contract between CenturyLink and the city. They are not asking for any special privileges, they're not asking for any exclusion of other partners. So if people wanna come in, we have talked with, with Comcast, they're thinking about putting it on the radar for 2018. And there's a couple other providers that, that may, most providers, when specifically asked about Nowland, said they're not interested and won't be for the foreseeable future. Comcast said they are looking at doing something on utility pools in 2018, but they couldn't make any commitment down there. So right now, CenturyLink is finishing up their infrastructure, and I believe we probably saw a fair amount of right-of-way permits from it. But that's, that's what we...
So is this, this, was this just a city of Nowland project, or is this something broader, like state?
The, the, the Connect America Funds are available nationally, and they applied for them for Nowland, Oak Grove, and various other parts around the state. I don't know where all they've, they've applied those funds, but it has to do with the density of households, as to where they can use the federal funds.
It's around the entire state.
Yeah, I know, I checked online, so I think there, that's what I was kinda getting at, it's kinda misinformation on this too, that, that, that money's became available in 2014 by FCC. Contract was awarded to CenturyLink in August of 2015. So this work was coming forward for the, for the whole state, not just for the city of Nowland, really, yes it is.
No, it, no, they can decide where they wanna use it. In fact, that's one of the reasons they haven't released any information, is because this, they say this can change on a dime. If, if somebody, somewhere else decides they wanna apply it in some other city, they can do it. They said one of the reasons that they are applying it now then, is because the number of calls that they've received, and the number, we, we've been asked by the, the vice president that's at the state Capitol, we've been working with Kurt Doughton and his crew there, to make sure every time they see him, to remind him about Nowland. The retail store knows us very well, it has everything to do, and, and I was just, I talked to a vice president recently, he's had everything to do with the fact that Nowland residents made sure that their voices were heard, they made sure that, they let them know that they would sign up when it was available, and we got moved to where we are because of the involvement of Nowland residents, according to CenturyLink.
Well, if you go onto the FCC website, it says something different, so, and that their contract was given to CenturyLink in August of 2015. And you show maps, it shows maps of the, shows maps of the whole country, and then you can zoom into Minnesota, and you can actually zoom right down to Nowland, and it shows the northern part of Nowland, some down there in the central, but the majority of the green that they're updating is the northern part of, part of the community.
Because they already serve the southern part.
Because, so this was approved a long time ago, wasn't, it wasn't just happening just because this committee, or you started a committee, or... part of the community.
Because they already serve the southern part.
Because, so this was approved a long time ago, it wasn't just happening just because this committee, or you started a committee, or, I have been following and watching this for years and talking to them, and it's federal monies from the FCC, and it's been started a while ago.
It's been in process, and we've been working to make sure it gets to Nalden.
But the monies and the projects were approved before your committee was able to form. It's on the internet, check it out.
They didn't have to use it in Nalden.
A big portion, it's my understanding, a big portion of why they chose this area is because of the existing equipment already in this area. And it was easier for them to expand on that existing equipment, to fulfill the requirements of the grant, so that's why they chose this area.
Cory.
One last thing, you guys have talked at the workshop about potential special meetings, and I don't know-
Are you ready? You're back.
I gotta look at these, I had a wrench thrown into things, so, I'm looking at these, or a scalpel.
So, then a question would be, is if Paul was accepting to that date, do you want me to schedule it for the August 24th?
Yes.
At 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
To continue on with the question on the internet access, if Cory would add into the comments, the phone number for the Coon Rapids Retail Outlet that residents can call is 763-421-9373.
And it's T-B-U-C-H-H-O, is the code for Nalden.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.